I'm calling to order our studies session, our budget study session. And first thing up is the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Who would like to present on that?
You guys got to announce your location, sorry.
I'm in, I'm Kelly and I am in Lather Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Bruce Cantor, Lather Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Salim Siddiqui, Lather Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Okay, now start.
Okay, well, this is the first session that we're going to have in regards to the upcoming fiscal year 21-22 budget. I just sent out a memo in regards to the revenue, so I'm going to try to share my screen. I just got a message from Ian saying he's here.
No, that was me. Cheryl, you texted me, so I said I'm here.
Yeah, no, you're there. Okay, I guess he's still trying. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. Let's see if I can make this work this time. Okay. Ooh, everything disappeared. I have no idea what you see.
You can see it.
Okay, I can't see it.
You're seeing page one of four. Twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two projections.
I understand. Okay, I act like I see it, but I don't see it.
Press your escape button. It was just bringing up, it has gotten a little smaller. Go into your right corner and press view.
I don't see view. I have the, I guess, control panel. It says your screen sharing is paused.
I don't know why it says that, but. And then do-
Okay, that did it. All right. Things you learned. Okay. So, for the upcoming year, similar to the current year, there are a lot of unknowns because of the COVID-19 pandemic situation in regards to revenue projections. We are anticipating a 2.2% decrease in revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. That's the latest announcement. And also, we're anticipating the American Recovery Plan dollars, our dollars of a little over $403,000. However, we don't know how we are anticipated to use those dollars. We have some very broad criteria, but in terms of the specifics, we don't know yet. Those guidelines haven't been issued. There is definitely an expectation that some of those dollars will be reallocated. And you have later in your agenda today, a request already from the DDA in regards to helping to fund the Loving Lather grant for the local businesses. So then in terms of some of the specifics, the 2021 military rate is projected to be 24.4906 mils. Last year was 20.9198 mils. The increase of 3.9307 reflects the milit- that was approved by the voters for the street project.
Go in there and get it. Drive over there and get a check.
The taxable value is calculated at 152,930. That's reduced from what we received from Oakland County of 155 because we do anticipate that there will be some board of review actions and we try to budget conservatively.
And that's 152 million.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Then though, one mil that was previously dedicated for the street militias now rolled back into the general operating and our headly rollback amount was .3599. So then you have- So then, what you have on this spreadsheet is how that is all divided up and you can see in the second yellow column, 21-22, an indication of the military rate of the 16.8783. And then below it, pulled out, you'll see the amount for the refuge, the library, and the street village.
Cheryl, it doesn't look like Ian is here.
Okay. Is he in the audience?
Yep.
Needs to be let in?
Yep. Adam. And I apologize, I thought my, uh, my microphone was on.
Thank you for letting me in.
Okay, any questions so far?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
Then this is a very rough draft of our revenues in prior year as well as estimated for this year and projected for the 21-22. You'll notice that the expenditures aren't reflected because they're still finalizing those for the current year as well as our projections. And the beginning fund balance for the current year is truly an estimated number because we're anticipating going into the fund balance, but I wanted to give, plug in a number so that you get a truer picture going forward. And so, based on these rough numbers, we're looking at at least having a balanced budget, fingers crossed as we go forward.
Are you on the, um, the militias? You know, you're not on that one part. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right. Never mind.
Yeah, I don't think her screen is scrolling. If she's scrolling it.
Yeah, that's-
It's not scrolling?
No, ma'am.
I mean, she did, she sent it to us in email, so you could, you could open it up and email. Oh, there she goes. She got it.
Okay. My email, as I sent you earlier, I need help with, um-
Oh. Yeah, I saw that. I figured Cheryl would get back to you. I can, I can see if I can find the link and get it to you later.
Thank you.
Okay, then this page is the other revenues. Again, trying to budget conservatively. The orange, or some of the numbers that were changed. And you'll notice that, so for the investments, we're looking at going down from prior years as well as some of the court fees. The community development black grant, that's based on actual dollars. The 14,000 is the reimbursement we received for the purchase of the recreation van. And the 8,000 is what we're anticipating, what we know we're being allocated for the coming year. The sidewalk is a little bit difficult to estimate in regards to revenues. And then the recreation fees and the community room fees is a rough guess. We don't know what's going to be allowed, let alone what's going to be the interest from individuals in the rentals and participating in our recreation programs. And the donations, that's really reflects the Lather Village Community Foundation. For last year, they technically did not provide us with any funding because just about everything was canceled. They did approve in January at their meeting, a reimbursement of, I think it was just over $1,200 for some activities that we did conduct. And they approved overall of 14,000 in change amount. Seventy-six hundred of it, I think, is for the concerts, which will be paying directly to the performers. And then the remainder, we split over the two years. So that's generally it right now for the revenues and the militias breakdowns. I didn't know if you had any questions at this point? No?
Not yet.
Okay.
You, you know, you know I'll have some.
Oh, yeah. All right, so I'll get rid of that. So, I guess technically I can quit sharing my screen. Now we're back to normal?
Yep.
Yay, all right, I did it. Okay. In regards to salaries, what I'm anticipating submitting to you will be a 2% increase. That was what was in the contract for the police officers for this year. And it looks like we're on solid ground to do that for all employees for the current upcoming year. And I wanted to make a special note that there will not be a transfer from the general fund to the, or the major street fund, to the local street fund because of the road militias.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we had talked about, recommended from the infrastructure committee, so we can, this is a reminder to keep building up that major fund because we're going to have to redo 11 Mile Road in the next probably two or three years. So that'll, that'll help mitigate that cost once we, once we get hit with it.
Okay, so there's no questions in regards to that portion of the agenda and the budget? We can talk about the capital improvement plan and that was provided in your packet. The planning commission did make their recommendations. I did make some modifications to that, mostly to more closely reflect what we had provided for in the two bond militias, the bonds.
Yep.
And those projects and those specific amounts. So, I didn't know if you had any specific questions or how much detail you wanted me to go over that. In general, the, the projects would be totaling is 5.3 million. And that includes this general fund projects, special assessments, the water sewer fund projects, the water CIP projects, road bond militias, and the local and street, and major street fund projects, which is a much smaller amount for this coming year.
Out of work.
And I do want to point out a couple of the major changes that I made. One, the planning commission had included the replacement of the Surrackwood Playground Equipment for 100,000 in this current fiscal year, and I put that out to next year, and I don't even know if that'll happen then because we'll need to have a plan in place. The body cams, I did include in the current fiscal year. We're still trying to get grant dollars for that, but I do think we need to try to move forward with that acquisition.
I was surprised at how much the playground equipment costs. That, that's crazy. Hundred thousand dollars for that. That's, but I guess it is what it is, right?
Yeah, I don't know how detailed that is versus a wish list, but that was definitely, it's pricey.
Yeah.
Do you have the actual-
It has to be durable.
The, the actual, um, what you'd be getting for the 100,000? Just curious.
I think that some of the detail was provided as part of the, um, the planning commission's consideration. And some of those dollars would probably be the installation as well.
Yeah, it has to be durable.
I think it's all, it's all abilities as well too, so that kind of ups the, you know, making sure the surfaces are
Yep.
Yeah. Fully accessible. I'll upload the document into-
Isn't there some type of grant that you could get for that for, um, uh, was it ADA compliance? Or doing that for perks or something? I'm just wondering. I, I think there is.
There, there are a couple of different DNR grants, the trust fund grant, and then there's the recreation passport. We've submitted our application, but that even, even if we are successful in funding that, it won't cover everything and it won't be awarded until the end of this year for like next fiscal year. So.
Okay.
I'll find the capital improvements doc though and send it to you guys so you can see the details in there, I think.
If that could you put the whole agenda in the chat, that might be helpful. And if you are looking at the spreadsheet that I submitted, the, at the very bottom of it, I point out the water capital improvement bond amount for the coming fiscal year to be about 3.1 million and the road amount to be about 1.5 million.
Cheryl, I can't tell you how happy it makes me that these numbers are now your issue and not mine.
Thanks.
They will always be your issue.
What's that?
They will always be-
I, I, I get it. I'm joking. It's just I had lived and breathed these numbers for two years and now that it's actually an actual project, it's kind of turned over to the city.
So. Thank you, Cheryl.
Well, this will be on your May 17th agenda for your actual adoption along with the budget.
There's a question in the chat. Is, are we expecting a Steve Schwartz?
Yes, for the next item.
Okay, his video is not active.
Okay. So if there aren't any questions on that, we can move on to item C, the retiree health addendum. I think that's on page 34 of your packet.
Did you say item C? I thought that was the encroachment license. Is C?
Yeah, what happened to that?
I have to see as a retiree health addendum.
Yeah, there's two sections. There's, there's two discussion item sections, so.
You skipped down to 3C already.
Yeah, we're in two, we're on 2C, not 3C.
Okay.
Page 34 or 27, whichever number you see.
2C, page 34. And is Steve here as well?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right, so we have, um, currently four employees. One in administration and three in the police department who are on the, what we call the old plan relative to retiree benefits, healthcare benefits. And Steve can probably go into more detail, but there was a recent court case in which it indicated that unless the language was specific in the agreements that the benefits were not for a lifetime and expired at the end of the contract period. So they were requesting that we, that the city affirmed that their healthcare benefits post-retirement were for a lifetime for them and their spouses if the spouses applied as well. So Steve, I don't know if you wanted to say anything else?
Yeah, thank you. Um, it's nice to see you all. Thanks to Mr. Ferguson for getting me in. You're, you're out of this world. This is a, a very, very complicated issue. It's been a very hot issue in employment litigation for at least five years. I, I don't know that you, I will give you a very brief summary overview. And I think you may either want to delegate this to a subcommittee or, or have another night where you're, you can, you can spend an hour going through all the details on this. The, around 2013, Lathrop was one relatively, or first cities that said for new hires, we're no longer going to offer retiree health insurance. We'll, we'll put money aside in an account to, to save up for, for health insurance. But prior to that, in our union contracts, we were offering retiree health insurance. So I've been representing you since 1997. I've worked with four different administrators and none of them have spent five seconds discussing with me eliminating retiree health insurance. To put this issue in context, because you only have four active employees left who were hired when there was retiree health insurance offered. You have, um, I think approximately 20 retirees that are getting it now. The last study you had done by actuaries, we have about $6 million of, of projected debt to pay for the retiree health insurance for the people already retired in the four active employees. This is one of your biggest ticket items. You've spent about eight and a half percent of your budget paying this. And like almost all cities, no money was put away in advance to pay for this. So you do what many cities is what pay as you go. And I believe you probably are putting, um, in a neighborhood of close to $400,000 a year in your budget just to pay this. And you're going to have this issue regardless for many, probably three decades, regardless of what you do with the four employees. The, the wrinkle is, a couple of years ago, the Michigan Supreme Court in a divided decision said that in union contracts or in individual contracts, unless there's clear and explicit language that promises retiree health insurance benefits for a lifetime, then there's no contractual commitment other than for the life of that contract, which is typically three years. And, and the concern after the union, and this, this is a US Supreme Courts wrestle with this and federal courts have wrestled with us all around the country and throughout Michigan. There was a tremendous concern after this decision came up by unions that cities would start wiping out retiree health insurance. That hasn't happened. I, I can, I can point to a couple that have drastically cut it. A city that I inherited, before I got there, City of Allen Park, the emergency manager wiped it out. And they've probably spent $400,000 in litigation and they're not done. They spent more in litigation than what they say. So this is something that you have to do very, very carefully. I'm never going to recommend to you that you eliminate retiree health insurance. You don't have that commitment now in your union contracts. Of the petition you got, two of the people are in a police union and they didn't raise it in this last negotiation, so we shouldn't be touching that. So it's really your two non-union people. But you really, I think should spend some time in another meeting going through some numbers about what your current problem is with the 20 or so folks. What Cheryl and I and your health agent have, have worked on and are trying to assess and how long this problem is going to be around. And then I think you have a better context. And I think your choice ultimately is either do nothing and see what happens or find a middle ground, which I've done it, I've recommended to a number of, of cities, which is you make some kind of commitment that you will provide your current two active employees, one of whom is watching this, they're probably, um, that you're going to provide health insurance, but you're going to reserve the right to modify it. Let me, let me say one more thing and then I'll take your comments. Health insurance is extremely unpredictable. So it changed tremendously when the Affordable Care Act was passed. It changed tremendously when Michigan, right around that time, did what was called small group reform, which just made it more expensive and made it taxed. There may very well be legislation in the next year out of Congress lowering Medicaid, Medicare five or 10 years. That, that debate is coming. We don't know what's going to happen. There are new products that come out and change things. There are costs as, as new surgeries and drugs come out that aren't predictable, that make it more expensive and you know, you're a very small community. You don't have a lot of resources. You've, you've got to spend your money very, very carefully. So I would never recommend to you that you give a lifetime commitment that you'll never change it under any circumstances, no matter how dire your financial conditions or no matter what insurance plans are available. Last thing. A few years ago, um, your agent in, in the city administration changed as the plans changed. There was a cheaper plan that was better for retirees, so they implemented that. And they were able to do that because of federal regulations changed. So this is something you, you, you take very slowly and you think through carefully. Because it, it is very, very expensive and if you make a commitment, you, you're not going to get out of it and you're too small to make, you know, a big financial mistake. So let me take your comments or questions at this point.
I think you're right that we probably would have to have another meeting to discuss it. I don't think that we have. I'm just going to say the band we, to have, actually have a subcommittee to, to put that together. So, um, Cheryl, I guess, you know, to figure out when is a, a good time for us all to get together again to be able to discuss some.
Mayor, what I, what I would suggest is you allocate about an hour that we, we won't give you the whole actuarial reports except for those of you that are taking melatonin and want to substitute, but we get you a, a couple of the key charts for you to look at and, and we'll talk about in that meeting and I'll go through some alternatives, but this, this is a very complicated issue, so I'm glad you're, I think we, we don't kick it down the road, the can down the road, but we, we really delve into the steeper.
Steve, I've, I've got a couple of questions for you. Um, so the, the first one, you kind of confused me a little bit when you, I, I thought this was related to, to just four specific employees because we, we don't is, do we offer a promise of lifetime healthcare for, for the remaining 20? You, you mentioned that, you mentioned the remaining 20 and that kind of got me confused.
Yeah, okay, so I, I don't think you decide what to do with the four people until we, you put it in a context of where you are with the 20 people. There may be one or two, a small number of retirees where 20 some years ago, there was a lifetime commitment made in a contract before I got here. Other than that, and we've looked at your contracts in the past, but for the 80, 90% of your retirees, exist the current retirees, I don't believe the courts would say there is a, there is a binding lifetime commitment to provide health, retiree health insurance and specifically not at the specific level you're giving it. The specific benefits. That doesn't mean that anyone has talked, ever talked about eliminating those benefits for those 20 folks or even drastically cutting them, okay? But I, my point that I'm trying to make is don't decide what to do with these, your four actives in a vacuum of not looking at where you are with the 20 folks that you already have on the books, okay?
Right, I know, I get, I get that, but we, but, but I, I guess what I'm looking for is the, for, for the, the people hired after 2005 or 2007, whatever that, whatever that date was when we, when we, when we switched over. Those people were never even given a, a whiff of, of
Oh, no.
Of, of lifetime healthcare, correct?
Right, that's, that's a totally different situation.
Right.
We, we put in, it's either a hundred bucks a month or a percent of salary
Right.
into their retiree, retiree savings account. It's sort of like a 401K. And so they're trying to accumulate enough money. So they'll have money for, for health insurance when they retire. By the time they retire, the whole system will probably be totally different. But yeah, they're not, they're not under consideration and they're really not the, the financial challenge at all. We've made that, we've made a different promise to them when they were hired than the people hired beforehand.
Can I interject? Can, can anybody hear me? This is Scott McKee.
Can anybody hear me? This is Scott McKee.
Go ahead, Scott.
So just appreciate just a quick minute to be able to interject here. You know, just to kinda go back through kinda the history here, your active employees that are that are seeking this addendum, they were part of the contract negotiations over the last twenty years. And we made the conscious effort, knowing what the cost of retiree healthcare was. And we bargained that away for the current employees so that the remaining people would have theirs. But the city would realize the cost savings, and they would not have the legacy costs. So while you're thinking about doing this, you know, Mr. Schwartz wrote the contracts. Nobody, nobody realized that we'd have a court decision that would potentially change those benefits. And all of the current retirees are still receiving, you know, healthcare benefits for themselves and their spouse. So again, I I understand you wanna do your due diligence and make sure that you're, you know, have all your facts and all your numbers. But again, I just wanna make you aware of that we, as employees, through collective bargaining, actually made these decisions so the city could realize that that cost savings down the road and get rid of the legacy costs. So, you know, the people who don't have retiree healthcare were able to get a health health savings account, and they've been able to do that for, again, however long it's been. I don't know the exact numbers. But if these four employees don't get the retiree healthcare, then they're they're sense, they're they're being cut, they're being stripped, they're being reduced of this benefit when everyone else has had an an opportunity to at least have a health savings account to help, you know, offset the cost of retiree healthcare. So I just figured I'd give you my two cents, and so you understand that there's there's a lot that's gone on behind the scenes that maybe the city council's not not aware of.
Thanks for that, Scott. A quick question to Mr. Schwartz. So I I didn't get the number as to how many former employees actually have the full benefit. Do you have a number behind that?
I do, eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen. Okay, we pay right now a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred per year for those retirees for a year, for all of them.
All right.
And these are eighteen retirees that that were hired after the plan switched over? So they had they had an
So these are the ones that are on the healthcare now.
Got it, okay.
Before.
And most of them, if I look back, we only have two, four, five, six of them that are not over the age of sixty-five. Once you turn sixty-five, you go into a whole different plan. You go into, they call it an egg whip plan. And that plan, when you go into that plan, your benefits are more, you have to take the Medicare. You have to take Medicare at age sixty-five. So what this is, is the prescription part of it.
Right, sup- supplementary Medicare plus Part D.
Correct.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead, Bruce. I was gonna say, out of the eighteen, how many are over that that threshold?
Twelve.
I don't, did you say twelve?
Yeah, she said she said six of them weren't over, they're eighteen, and she said six of them were not over sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Oh, six, okay, I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, this is the kinda detail I wanna go through with you. And I agree with everything the chief said. And again, I wanna reiterate, no one, to my knowledge, has ever talked about eliminating this benefit or drastically cutting it. And I'm I'm certainly not recommending you do that, and I I won't recommend that. And I haven't recommended it at any municipal client.
Right, I mean, looking at it, I mean, maybe I'm looking at it a little bit too simplistically, Steve. But it it seems to me that this is for the four, for the four people. This is a benefit that was, that has essentially been, you know, promised. But the, you know, due to semantics, you know, the 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 language wasn't in check with how the court just ruled. And, you know, the the I I it sounds like their request is just to fix the language to explicitly state so that that a court can't overturn it and say, look, or we or a later administration within the city can't overturn it and say, you no longer get benefits. That that's my simplistic view of it, is that.
Yeah, I I I think that's close. You know, I I've certainly negotiated language in contracts that that you can make some modify, some modifications, but you don't got the plan. And that's really where I think you ought to go. But but none of us in the nineties and two thousands and two thousand teens, none of us on either side saw this decision coming.
Right.
Or we would have written the language differently.
Yeah, I I I agree, if I can trip in again. I I've actually talked to Cheryl about this, and I don't think any of the four employees would argue that, you know, in the future, if Blue Cross decides to eliminate the plan that we retire on and come up with a a plan that would substantially reduce the cost to the city, but again, maintain basically the the same benefits. I know we've done this in the past with Avidesian and and Lynch, and I believe Armstrong. Again, I don't think the, any of the employees would would have a problem with that or argue that point. Because again, we're still here, we've been longtime employees of the city, and we're here to, obviously, to help that. We're not gonna stand fast that, no, you, you know, I'm not changing my plan. I think that's kinda ridiculous, because as we've all, as we know, Medicare and medical costs and plans change rapidly. So this is my two cents, I think we would be all for that.
The bottom line, we just need to, we need to talk this through further because I'm I'm trying to make sure that I totally understand what's happening. And basically, it is about us eliminating the lifetime, the lifetime plan, right? I don't know if it's eliminating it, but clarifying what the expectations are.
Right, clarifying.
You you, well, Mayor, you have the theoretical right to completely eliminate it for the four and for the eighteen.
Right.
No one's talking about doing that. Where we wanna go in the future, and what your current financial situation is on this issue, that's where I think, let us get some documents to you ahead of time and totally think this through, and 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 we'll come up with a solution that's that's workable, okay? Because because no one is talking about wiping out retiree health insurance or or gotten it, okay? I just want you to have a little bit of flexibility.
Okay.
All right. And we can give you
Yeah, if you can give us some options, and then I guess we gotta put it on the agenda for an hour or so.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna have a separate, we're probably gonna have a separate meeting on this because I have a lot of questions, and I don't think that right now is the the right time. I would like to see the documents that you said that you can send to us. Mr. Schwartz, and we can set up another meeting to talk only about this.
Okay.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Can I?
Yeah.
I don't know who was on council. I know Kelly, you were on council with Jeff Mueller was the manager. And when Jeff was retiring, you guys were gonna put me to the health savings account. And Jeff said that you wouldn't be able to put enough money in a health savings account for me for the years I've been there so that my best bet would to be to stay on the retiree healthcare plan. And I was the last one in the city for that. I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder that, you know, Jeff Mueller had said that too, that to keep me on that benefit.
Got you. Oh, I, and finally, that's why I have a lot of questions because I do remember, I do remember this for some reason very clearly, and as I have some extra questions. Thanks for that. Ian, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, the vast majority of us weren't on council. But whenever we set up this meeting, this special meeting, hopefully, we can get further background information, details, and, you know, show us worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, or something in the middle that would help combination of the city and the retirees or the the beneficiaries so we can act accordingly. Now, I was directing that to Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, taking notes.
Okay, thanks.
I'll get back with everyone for scheduling that meeting. And when, and and just a simple reminder, if, when you see that doodle poll or whatever you see that comes out asking you for your time, could you please fill that out as expeditiously as possible so we all can have our schedules put together? Thanks.
Okay, are you ready to move on to item two D?
Yes.
Rescue Plan?
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Schwartz.
So, as you've probably heard, this federal government is releasing about three hundred and fifty billion dollars to states and local governments. It's based on a per capita, and so the City of Latha Village is expecting to receive about four hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Right now, the indication is that it will come in two separate installments. The first one being around May or June of this year, and the next one being May or June or June of next year. Those funds are going to be required to be used by December of two thousand and twenty-four. The guidelines haven't been issued yet, but some of the broad indications are it can be used to mitigate public health emergencies and negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, providing government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue to, so in other words, to supplement budget shortfalls due to revenue loss, investments in broadband infrastructure, as well as water and sewer infrastructure, and responding to workers performing essential work during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency to provide premium pay to those eligible workers. We don't know what exactly that means, or what it looks like, or what the limits are. So until we get that information, we really can't look at how we're going to apply that to our budgets or setting up funds for pass-through dollars. So we may need to give some consideration as to how we want to approach the use of those dollars, whether it's a study group or you just want a recommendation from staff to you, or what approach you would prefer. But we can start giving that some thought because we're expecting those guidelines, hopefully, by the end of this month. Already, we have received a request from the DDA asking for the fifty thousand to help support the Loving Latha Village Business Mini Relief Grant Program. And I expect that there might be some others. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, I liked I liked the Loving Latha idea with the the DDA. But it seems to me that, you know, we should wait for the guidelines before we, you know, do any type of approval of any type of, you know, just just distributions. Because until we know what what we can do with this money, it doesn't really make sense to be giving it out.
I bet you couldn't do anything with it anyway until you got the direction of what you could do with it.
Probably, that's probably true.
Yeah, I think you you had to wait for the direction first before you could give it out. And I think that if they're, you know, I'm not sure what that looks like in helping a homeowner. So it would be interesting just wanting to see what the rules are, and then try to brainstorm to see, you know, exactly how we can distribute the money.
Well, and just from the the DDA perspective, I mean, we were thinking specifically for those home-based businesses since they are, they were not eligible for the funds raised for the properties that are in the commercial quarter. So that's that's where our focus was. I know other public comment lately has indicated we should be helping our neighbors. So that's kind of where I thought. So, but we just wanted to throw that out there as an idea. We understand that the city has plenty of other budgetary needs, but that that was just an idea that we had that we wanted to share.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a, yeah, I think it's a noble gesture to bring that up and try to come up with some sort of solution. I agree.
We have the capacity to, you know, to manage the grant, so we're happy to do that for for everyone.
Okay. And I don't anticipate that we're going to know what that is before you adopt the fifth fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Hopefully, we'll know at least what the dollar amount actually is and some broad indication of how it can be used in time for an amendment before June thirtieth. But we just have to be flexible, it depends on, we get it when we get it. So if you're ready for the next item, that is three A on page thirty-nine, is a cover memo in regards to the request for identifying if and how we can have special assessments or millages on the winter tax bill. And I don't know if you want a response from Scott in regards to that.
Yeah, it was it was brought up last, was it last meeting or last study session about moving it, and and it it would require a charter amendment. The process for that would, in this scenario, would come from a motion of council to approve the language and put it on the ballot. I, what I looked, I couldn't find the deadlines, and I don't know if Evette had a chance or not to look. But all I could find was for the May election, which doesn't help us. But it's it's usually somewhere between sixty and ninety days before before the election that that the ballot language has to be submitted. So if that were, if that were be, were something council were interested in, we would, we could get working on that.
As we talk about charter amendments, something that I would like you to consider, especially working through the budget now, and I don't know how they set up the budget needing to be adopted in May when there's a July start date. But it's so far in advance of when the budget starts, and a lot of the information that we get from other agencies and entities, we don't even have yet. We get it right at the last minute. So if it could be changed to a date in June, it would give a little bit more breathing room to pull all that information together.
But isn't that controlled by the state or no? No, that's controlled by, though that deadline is in our charter. And I don't know if Pam has any thoughts or inputs on that. But it I I don't know what what the rationale or history was behind having it done in May. I I don't see any problem with with moving it to June, as long as it would allow time for, you know, year-end budget amendments. I don't see any issue with it. But again, if Pam has any input on that.
No, I don't see why it would make, I'd probably have a special meeting for the first meeting of June, though. So then the sec, because the second meeting is your budget amendments, then.
Right. Yeah, well, I I was the one who suggested that, you know, I I thought it was a simple, you know, move, giving us the ability to move villages and special assessments to winter tax. I thought that was a simple thing, but it looks like it's a lot more complicated. I guess I still don't fully, fully understand it. But if it's gonna be more more trouble than it's worth, then, you know, we could just not do it. But if there's a way to do it easily, then, yeah.
Never mind. Never mind, I can't find it. All right.
Are you okay then with moving forward with the charter amendment language? To change the budget date?
If we were going to do the winter tax bill, and then also, I mean, it makes sense of what you're talking about with the budget also. So I mean, that's why I'm kinda like, if you're gonna do one, then let's just go ahead and do both. Or, you know, if you need one, the one will help us much more regarding the budget. I I, yes, that's my thoughts, yes. I don't have to keep explaining.
Yeah, they would, I mean, they would be two separate ballot questions. But, yeah, if you're gonna do one, it doesn't hurt to do two. Yeah. Okay, that's good.
So, yes, Cheryl. Okay, that's my thoughts, but you know, you, there's other people online to
That makes sense, I agree with you. Ian, Celine?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, this is this is Evette. So you guys want to know the date for September of this year? I'm sorry, November of I'm sorry, November of this year for a ballot initiative? I'm I'm looking that up, I'll chime back in as soon as I find it.
That's gonna be coming up pretty soon, though, because I keep, now, yeah, thought about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually we, I would think it's probably something like by the end of June or July, it has to be submitted and approved.
Yeah, I think it's June.
Because the the state AG has to weigh in on it, and the county would have to approve it as well, or at least give them an opportunity to object to it, but.
So you weren't doing anything the next few nights, right, Scott?
Right. Exactly.
So we're talking about putting this question on the ballot, right?
Yeah, there's there's charter amendments.
You have to. And so in order to get it in November, I think, and I don't know, it seems like I just looked it looked it up myself or something, but it's either at the, like you said, in the June, whatever, and Scott would just have to do it.
Yeah, we just, we have the, we have the the language, it'd be a resolution that council would would pass, it would require a three-fifth majority of council, and then it would get sent out to, like I said, the county, the state, and then put on, put ultimately put onto the ballot.
So we're a little bit behind then, right? So obviously, unless you're ahead of the game, Scott.
No, I mean, it's this just, this just came up as a hypothetical last meeting, so we're we're right on pace. It's not, depending on the deadline, I think we'd have, you know, as long as we have time to get it in front of council for a regular meeting prior to that deadline, we should be fine.
Okay.
Well.
Thanks. Next.
The next one is item three B, study session recordings. That's on page forty of your packet. And a question was raised relative to if you want to have your study sessions video recorded.
I guess I I can just jump in. So, you know, I was I was talking to the mayor about our study sessions being recorded, and then I said, well, you know, it it may be unusual to have recording, but then it occurred to me, and I think Cheryl pointed it out, that we're audio recording our study sessions prior to COVID and prior to, you know, being locked down, locked locked in in our houses. So my biggest concern was, maybe it's just a video medium, you know, maybe it's just because it's so new to us that I was like, you know, feeling that I couldn't speak freely on certain issues, you know, for fear that it may end up on social media as as a twisted way of communicating, but after. What was that?
So that happens now anyways.
It does, it does, that's what I'm saying. So so I take a step back after Cheryl said, hey, you know, we were recording it audio prior to, I said, oh, okay, so I'm feeling more comfortable.
Yeah, well, Ian, you know what, truly, what what I think it is, Ian? Because I I thought a lot about that, too, because there's a lot of times where, well, I mean, first off, I think we need to be as transparent as possible, so I think it's a good thing that we're.
Yeah, for sure.
But but what what we're missing by video is is, you know, you get you get an idea in your head, like, well, what if we did this? And it may be a really stupid idea, but you got to go through about twenty stupid ideas before you get to a really good one. And so the problem is, the problem is, what what would normally happen before COVID is you and I would be standing out in the hallway, and, you know, we would have a conversation, you know, I was thinking about bringing this up, what if we did this this way? And then you look at me and say, Bruce, that's stupid, that won't work because of this, and then it never gets brought up. But since we don't see each other anymore, we don't have those candid conversations. So you feel somewhat pigeonholed when you're actually, you know, on camera like we are right now. Well, do I want to suggest that? Because I haven't really thought that through, and I really want to brainstorm it, but do I want so-and-so to post on social media? Oh, my God, did you hear what Cantor said in the meeting last night? So I I think that's why we're all feeling that way.
Yeah, that that was my next point, because, right, right, that that was my next point, because we're totally missing the the human interaction, right?
Right.
We're just like squares on a video, and, you know, any any resident watching this would say, holy cow, they're they're not in sync, you know, when it takes a lot of backstage talking or discussions or saying, hey, you know, I thought about this idea, what do you think about it? Like you just said, they don't take that into consideration. What I mean, they is some residents are looking at us and scrutinizing everything we say, when in fact, we're all in one room or, you know, getting food together or giving Scott Baker a hard time, and then he's straightening us out, that kind of stuff. That kind of banter back and forth, the human interaction is totally eliminated. So that's how I was feeling, literally, and when I talked to the mayor, she's like, hey, I'm feeling the same way, too. I'm like, why are we recording these things? But then it occurred to me, we do record, we have recorded, it's just that point you just made, we don't have that anymore.
Yeah, and then and we need to always be seeking to be more transparent, not less, so.
Exactly, and this was, this pre-COVID is something that you guys actually talked about expanding. You know, you expanded to include the planning commission meetings that weren't previously recorded or broadcasted. And it was more of a logistics issue on the study sessions, why it wasn't recorded and broadcasted. Well, this is your logistical solution to that problem, so.
Yeah.
You you know, and and I understand what you what you guys are saying, or Ian specifically is saying as far as the stuff taken out of context, but but it is, I think it's it's an important resource to have these videos that you can go back on. And you can show that, look, this is this is what what we're doing, this is the process that we go through to come to these decisions. And that, I think, helps negate some of the some of the public perception that these decisions are made in a vacuum or are made by some outside entity or or factor. So I think it's it is, it is a great asset to have, and and, you know, I would strongly recommend continuing continuing to do that.
Yeah, great, great example of that, Scott, was it happened today with, you know, at our last council meeting, the recommendation for the twenty-twenty-two roads was needed to be acted on, and we just took it as a recommendation. So we we, the engineer can't start doing his work because we never officially voted on it. And so Cheryl and I went back to the, you know, separately, both went back to the the recording of the meeting, and were able to actually see exactly where it was and what was said, and oh, yeah, we didn't actually take action on it. So it's a great record as well, so.
What what Ian was, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Ian, and this is where I backed off of it. And again, it could be that, anyway, the recording of this regardless is going to be recorded. You get what I'm saying? So it even if you don't record through Zoom, it's going to be recorded as in, I'll, you know, it it's going to be recorded as in it replays, well, not the study session, because I don't say it replays anyway on on. But to say, well, and I get what you're saying, and what everyone is saying about transparency, but it's also kind of like the conversation that we had about this last week, and I totally agreed with Ian, just to be really transparent, is that it would be misconstrued of the way it was brought up or what we were discussing. So that's why we were just saying that, you know, yes, you're absolutely right, when we were in person, we were able to, we were able to do the bantering beforehand, but then you can't satisfy everybody anyway, because even when now we're recording here, they still don't want, you know, there's people that still think that this is not inclusive enough also, and that, you know, you need to do it a different way. So I don't, I don't know how to resolve everybody's issues anyway, keep it very transparent at the same time.
Yeah, I think all we can do is be as transparent as possible, and, you know, recording these things, I think that accomplishes that. I think so, I think it's probably a good thing. These are public meetings anyway, so people can come, people can attend, participate, so I think recording it is just, it's going to be just part of that.
Yes, and and that's, you're all very much correct in regards to that. And one consideration is, even if we weren't recording the Zoom session, the remote sessions, an individual watching still has that capability of doing it. And the same holds true if you were meeting in person, someone could come and videotape the meetings themselves. So you might as well.
They couldn't do that, because somebody did try to come and videotape. You remember that, Bruce? Somebody did try to come in and in.
It sounds vaguely familiar, but I don't, I don't remember.
Typically, it's permitted as long as they're not disruptive.
It was something that someone asked, and there was a, no, but I can't, it's vaguely, and I can't remember what it was, so, anyway. We beat that horse to death, I guess, so we can move on.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, if I could, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, I found the schedule, and the date is by four P M August tenth for your ballot wording to be qualified to appear on the local ballot.
Great, Scott, save, you save Scott summer.
I'm I'm sorry, Evette, can you say that again? When when was the date?
August tenth.
Before four P M.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, thanks, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Okay, the next item is item three C on page forty-one, the encroachment license application. And I think we were having this conversation since day one of my arrival here three years ago in regards to the property at two seven six eight zero Latha Boulevard, where the individual property owner has been utilizing, I guess, an essentially abandoned street, San Quentin, as his driveway, and is really the only access point to his garage. And because there are a number of items that have been put there, he didn't have actual permission or authorization to be utilizing this space as his own. So we tried giving him a number of options, and we have finally come to an agreement that he is applying for the encroachment license. He's paid the application fee. I'm not aware of any other outstanding issues in regards to this request, so the plan is to put it on the May seventeenth city council agenda.
Okay.
Not there for a while.
Yeah, it has, I mean, it's, yeah, that's, I was kind of happy to see it, because I know that this was, yes, day one issue. And I had.
One of us, one of us council people live very close to that location, right?
Yeah, I do.
One of us does.
Two of you, two of you.
You're right, you're right, you're right, and I should have known that. I did my driver, I've been doing my drive around latest, I can be like Bruce, I can find all the stuff that is, what needs to be discussed. So I don't walk around, obviously, if you saw my post today, know I gained weight. So I drive around and I I I noticed that, it's funny that it came up on our, on our.
I'd be driving around, too, if I had that car.
Hey, hey, hey. Next.
All right. Five D, marijuana cannabis update. The planning commission did consider both the zoning ordinance and the general code ordinance language at their April twentieth meeting, I included a link to the video. The current sunset expires in August twenty-twenty-one. So at the present time, a public hearing is being planned by the planning commission for June fifteenth on the zoning amendments. And we're anticipating that council would have the two readings of the general code ordinance scheduled for June twenty-first for the first reading and July twenty-sixth for the second reading. And then, Scott, does the zoning ordinance then come to council for final adoption?
Yeah, so after the June fifteenth public hearing, then a recommendation from planning commission will will come to council for action, and it's only one reading at council because of the the public hearing counts as the first one, so.
So if we, obviously Cheryl sent out the ordinance, the pending ordinance several weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago, not several. Do we need to do a quick review, maybe Salim and I, or if we have any issues, how do we address it before we?
Yeah, if there's any, if there's any issues or concerns, it's it's pretty much unchanged from what what was presented previously. There's some minor modifications and and changes that have been incorporated based on questions and feedback that Jill and I have received throughout this process.
Just to be specific, those those changes that we made at the last planning commission meeting are not in the, and that's noted in the packet, but they're they're not in reflected in the in the in the packet that we got for today. So there's.
Okay, that's the language.
So are we getting those? Are you getting, are we getting a revision to like review, or or are they minor changes?
There were relatively minor changes. Basically, just creating, making the hours of operation consistent with other businesses in the in the city was one of them. Changing the distance separation, it was previously that there was a distant separation between cannabis facilities. This is gonna, we're gonna eliminate that distant separation unless there becomes more than two cannabis facilities. So right now, there they would be able to locate and just next to each other if they really wanted to. And then the last one dealt with that I have for for my change, the last one that dealt with was with respect to the criteria for minimum scoring, if it's if it's, I think it was seventy percent, we upped it to eighty-five percent. So any application that doesn't score at least eighty-five percent was not, is considered rejected, so.
Yeah, and the rationale for that was that we feel that there's going, we felt that there was going to be, you know, there's there's going to be no shortage of of vendors trying to secure, you know, two licenses, should we approve this? And given that, we should make the the standards very high, you know, in order for them to to get a license. Scott, I have one other question every, every time I read it, which has now been about twenty times between council and the planning commission. But one thing I I noticed when I read through the packet, that maybe we ought to make it a little more explicit, but we said that that, you know, somebody could apply for a medical, you know, within a given facility, could have both a medical and a recreation in in their facility, and that they they would have to apply separately and pay the five thousand dollar application fee for both of those. But it's, I'm I'm assuming, from our discussion, that only counts as one of Lathrop's licenses, not both.
Correct, okay, and I think what we had discussed was that there would be two medical and two recreational licenses, because they are separate, so.
Okay, but 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 we were only talking about having two actual facilities.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll confirm that with Jill, but I thought we were on, do the impression you wanted two of each.
No, we, well, we we had, we had said two, two facility, well, no, it was, it was two testing and two and two provisioning centers, but what got me thinking about that was the provisioning center, you know, we said could have both medical and recreational, and so, you know, that wouldn't count as both of our licenses.
Right, yeah, because it's just one center, because it is a separate approval from the state for.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right, so we need to, we need to make the the language a little bit more explicit, so that it's not, it's not ambiguous.
Correct, yeah, we'll fix that.
And so for this, um, this public hearing that's going to be June fifteenth, and this is a question, so before you all try to jump all over me about this question, is, do you think that this should be a hearing that is actually done in person?
How could we do that? I mean, are we officially open as far as a state mandate?
I think it would really depend on the perceived attendance at the public hearing. You know, our capacity is twenty-five percent of what we're allowed to, the community room is, I I don't see it being, we did outside or something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we do it, try and do it outside?
So the reason why I'm asking is because I did, you know, of course, my evening reading, I I read something about, you know, just being accessible. And the fact is that it's a public hearing, and if people, there are people that do not have access to the internet, laptop, computer, or whatever, then they are not able to participate in the public hearing. And this is, to me, you know, would be pretty important.
We could attempt to have a hybrid meeting where some are in person and some are remote. I don't necessarily know what logistics that that would require, but in theory, it's possible.
I did one of the, I did one of those recently, and it didn't go well.
Because it's going to be technology fighting against a live feed.
It was just, the problem we ran into doing it was for a domestic violence response team. We had a large number of people online, and then probably about fifteen people in in the court that were live, and we couldn't hear, we had audio problems with the TV, so nobody in the live room could hear anybody that was talking online and vice versa. People would have to walk up to the laptop to talk, it just was, it it was not good, so.
Yeah.
Would there learn from that, that might be be able to be overcome? Learn from that, that might be um, be able to be overcome in advance?
I mean, I think what we're doing is allowing for public comment to, I mean, we've always allowed public comment in writing, but public comment to be submitted. Prior to the meeting, um, you know, the these notices are gonna go out uh, well in advance, so. You know, and and also it's already on the city's website, I believe. Um, so, you know, getting getting the word out if people do have comments or or concerns that they can, they can address those and get them. Even if they don't have access to that technology, they they still have that opportunity to submit those, those concerns.
I I am, I'm really concerned about the public hearings and that people will feel as though they're not able to assess assess those. Even though they do have it where they can do it in writing, you know, writing, mailing it. But when do you mail it to get there on time kind of thing, or dropping them off? I just, you know, I I'm I'm being conscious of what was, what was stated.
Why don't we try to do it outside? I mean, obviously, weather is a risk, but you know, worst case, we can, you know, have people talking under the gazebo or, you know, I mean, there there's gotta be ways of. Of making that work.
Can we go back to the number of facilities? Cuz I was just texting Jill. Um, so in theory, based on what you just said, Bruce, in my understanding. That you guys are talking about doing two recreational facilities, two medical facilities.
No, 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 no.
Right, cuz I am, that's the way it's sounding.
No, it could be, it could be one facility that has both medical and recreational.
But it couldn't be, so it couldn't be.
Couldn't be four separate facilities.
It couldn't be four separate facilities, cuz that's totally the way I interpreted what you said, Bruce, and I was very confused.
That's, that's why, that's why I brought it up, because I think it needs to be made very explicit in the, in the ordinance that. You know, we're talking two physical locations. Um, and one of the, you know, either of those, either or both of those locations could have both medical and recreational. But we we only ever talked about having two physical locations, you know, two physical provisioning centers.
Alright.
And that's what, that's what I brought it up, because I didn't want it to look like either there were four, you know.
Right, it, um, isn't that the adjustment you guys made at the uh, planning commission, the wording? Is that what?
I just, just brought that up based on.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, got you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, Suzie, that's exactly what I was trying to do, is make sure that there absolutely was no confusion over that, so.
But it wasn't in my head before you put it there.
Right, but it, but it was, when I, when I reread the, when I reread the ordinance last night, I was like, wait a minute, yeah, so.
Um, no, we, we're just co-locating, basically, right, Scott?
Yeah, and I, and I'm, yeah, yeah, that's basically, I mean, I know that there's some requirements from the state and I'm sure. Maybe someone that's in the audience uh, that is involved in the industry would be able to identify it. But uh, as far as separation of products, separation of records, um, it's, I I don't know how many of them will be doing the the hybrid both. Um, but I guess we'll, we'll see when we start getting applications.
Well, and I've talked to a couple that, a couple different guys that have said, um, what they do is they just. At, give a ten percent discount uh, for anyone if they show their card, they're just like, I'm just, show me your card. And basically, you don't pay tax, right, or you, you know, so. Alright, yeah, kinda, it's your frequent chaper or something like that. Um, okay, so still. Two provisioning, two testing.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah. Sorry, didn't mean to scare you.
That's all right, it's it's, it's my kind of Monday, just wanted to make sure, right, thanks, sorry about that.
So, um, we need to um, kind of talk about um, what we're gonna do for a public hearing. If I think there, the, yeah, how we wanna, the logistics of a public hearing, and we can get back with that.
Yeah, I I think outside is okay if you wanna think about that, but um, otherwise, I would. I'm not in favor of doing inside, you know, public meeting at this point. I think still there's enough safety issues out there. I would rather err on that side of caution and not do that. I know people, some people might not have access, but, you know, I think it's better for us to make sure everyone's safe first. And then, you know, and just do, just do it on a Zoom call or do it outside if that's a poss- possibility.
Oh, I mean, I I am not fast wanting to be inside either, don't get me wrong. However, I'm just also um, trying to make sure that we are acknowledging the fact that. There are people that might not have access to.
Yeah, 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 of course, I I agree with you. We should acknowledge that, but I think, I think this, to me, I think there's enough of, and we still have a lot, too many cases. I don't think we're there yet where we can um, but coming inside ahead of, like, making sure everyone is. You know, as risk-free as possible.
Great.
I mean, just thinking, thinking back to the last, the public meetings we had on that issue, I mean, there were a couple hundred people there. Um, easily, so spreading that, I guess, outside, having the audio equipment to, so that everyone can hear. Have an opportunity to talk and maintain social distance, um. And we'll have to look into that feasibility.
Would it be worth like having almost like a display set up in city hall, like in lobby? And allowing people that, like, give them an opportunity to fill out something in person there.
And so the truth about it is, I wanna give people the every single opportunity.
Yeah.
For them to be able to give their feedback, so when it comes to, they didn't know about this, or they weren't able to do something. They had every opportunity, so if we did it outside, if we still put it on Zoom, if they still can mail things in, if we still set something up in the lobby. We can do all of it, cuz I just wanna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard.
Right, I I agree with you, Kelly, just to, just, I think there's some people that are still not comfortable with 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 Zoom and. You know, no matter what we do, we never give anybody enough opportunity according to, you know, somebody. And so this is just, this is the way that they're used to, and especially with this, with a contentious issue like this, I think it just, it it. It gives them the opportunity to provide input and it it takes away the, well, we couldn't come in person, you know, argument, so.
I like both of those, actually, um, uh, Suzie, about, yes, set something up there, you know, like a little box, fill your comments out. And and then also trying to figure out how we can do it outside. I just, um, yeah, I think that's, oh, not trying to rehash what Bruce just said, but yes. Anyone else?
Okay, we have an opportunity to try to get something inserted in the upcoming edition of Your Town. We're finalizing the content right now.
I guess it's obvious what I just forgot about.
So, I I don't know if we wanna put a survey or just have people their com- ask people their comments and. It would be a little long to include all the language of the ordinance, but perhaps a summary of the two ordinances. And where they can access the, the entire document.
That might be a good idea.
Okay.
We can give them, like, that, we could give them like an online thing, so they could do it online if they want.
Yeah.
Or tell them, I don't know.
I mean, you know, well, you are, I'm I'm being a dead horse, address, everybody's email address, everybody's phone number, you know. You know, I forgot, I need to check my, my, we have voicemails now, don't we? I need to check that maybe once. Okay. So we're moving on to item three E. I don't know why it excites me so much, but um. It's really exciting to see these bulldozers over here and to see, well, sorta exciting, sorta not. To see these big things are sitting on my lawn, um, that I just got cut. Um, what are the, the blockades, whatever, the big. Okay, maybe I'm just weird and I'm the only person excited.
No, it's, it's exciting. There's a lot of great things that are happening, so this is good.
Yeah, I mean, it's called progress. I mean, you know, a lot of people lived in Lathir for thirty years, twenty-six years. And uh, never seen that kind of activity and, I mean, really, we were way overdue. And whatever we, whenever we decided, we did decide, and now the ball is rolling. And people are gonna be frustrated for the first couple of months. But in the end, it's gonna be well worth the progress and I totally get it. And I'm gonna extend my apologies now because there will be frustration, but in the end, we will have progress.
I found a new route home today, because I started training myself not to go the way that I normally go. So I've been doing really interesting ways. I think I hit every councilperson's house to be able to get home today. So you know, I did a very interesting way to go home.
Especially if you were near my house or Ian's house or Salim.
I did, I did, actually coming out for six ninety-six, maybe I was just driving around looking, but anyway, I'm sorry, three E.
So, infrastructure update, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
So, um, the uh, the street projects are getting kicked off today. And there is a quick link on the website where I'll be putting me in, um. Suzie will be putting updates as they are happening, so that people can have access to that information on a more timely basis. But right now, those streets that have been identified previously are up and running in what we call group one. And relative to those, the, I contacted the post office and actually got a live person. And they indicated that once there is construction on the roads, they will automatically hold the mail for any streets that are being impacted. So residents can contact the post office on Southwood Road to get their mail. Um, during the regular hours of operation and that telephone number is eight hundred two seven five eight seven seven seven.
Game gap in the chat also just, in case.
Okay, when I'm, okay.
And I'll put it there, I'm sorry.
Eight zero zero, two seven five.
Wait, 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 I'm really, um, okay, eight zero zero, two seven five.
Eight seven.
Eight seven.
Seven seven.
Seven seven, this is to the post office in Lathir?
Yes. And during the two to three week period where the roads will be closed, residents will need to seek alternate um, parking locations. I know they said initially that some of those are having them um, more minor work done. They may be able to access between generally uh, um, non-operating hours. Um, but we're telling them to park elsewhere anyway. The police department will be patrolling and um, they should not be issuing tickets or warnings for people parking overnight. I did hear at least one person got a warning, so I reminded the our, our officers to.
Yeah.
Not be taking it for that.
Just to be specific, we'll be patrolling for safety to keep those cars safe, since we're gonna have extra cars on the street, not, not to be ticketing.
Correct. And the sprinkly, sprinkler systems, they should be marked, but if something happens, those will be repaired. As well as the landscaping, it'll be a couple of weeks after the constructions ended and they allow for the ground to settle. Before they come in and will plant um, the seeds. Residents are requested, required to water consistently for the first two weeks to allow the grass to grow back. On the exterior water service excavation, also called the lead and copper verification and the stop box replacement. And that's what we've contracted with um, Sunday services to do. And that was also the situation where the state had changed from um, requiring us to do all households to three hundred and fifty properties. That are randomly selected and um, those are underway. And the week of May third to the fourteenth, they'll be doing on those on streets of Bloomfield, Coral Gables, Eldorado Place. Kilburny and Lathir Boulevard. The lead and copper service line replacement for those homes that have been identified as having um, either lead or galvanized steel. Um, there's twenty-one identified so far and letters have gone out asking for them to sign the agreements to allow for. The access and the changing of those lines. Um, we have received fifteen signed agreements so far. And I've con- I'm contacting um, DeAngelo Brothers relative to contracting with them to get those um, done, hopefully starting in June.
I got a question regarding the leaded, lead and copper line replacement. So, so those contracts went out to those residents, um, but I think Scott Baker need to look at item number seven on that contract. It's, it's at the bottom of the contract and it says here, and maybe I should ask Scott directly. Why would the homeowner hold harmless the city engineer and the contractors? Um, if there is any damage to that line when they're installing it, so I need you to read that item seven.
I can answer that, because that's, the work is being conducted and contracted through DeAngelo Brothers. And in the earlier paragraph, it says specifically that they are responsible and that they're required to have coverage for the work. To guarantee the work that they're doing. The city and the city's entities are not the ones conducting the work. So that's why that language is there and that's the standard language in all of the contracts throughout the SACWA.
That, that was their language and it's their responsibility should there be any damage, not the city's.
Okay, so DeAngelo Brothers, in case there is damage, not the, not the, not the resident, the resident. Is not going to be liable if there is damage, right?
No.
Okay, alright, cuz this was pointed out to me by a resident, we wanna make sure that's clear. So where's that statement that says DeAngelo Brothers is, is gonna be liable?
Do you have the contract in front of you? I don't have it.
Yes, yeah, I do. I'm looking through it, I don't see it, but um. I actually had to pull it up on my phone, so that's probably the reason. Or if we can't find it, we just have to take a note and then circle back.
If you look under the city oil contractor will, and then it's on page two of the contract. Number four says require the contractor during the work to provide and maintain adequate insurance to protect the owner against any loss. That may result from damage caused by negligent construction operations on the owner's property. And require the contractor to provide the city with proof of such coverage.
Okay. Alright, I got it.
And then it says guarantee the owner that any work done will be free from defects in material and workmanship for a period of one year. From completion of the work, the guaranteed period.
Yep. Alright, I got it.
Hey, Sean, can I add a couple of things in there regarding the exterior excavations? Uh, I did talk to Sunday uh, the other day. They have finished phase one A and phase one B. Uh, I think there was about thirty of them to do. They are having issues with Miss Dig and their timeliness. Uh, Miss Dig has said they won't be able to stake anything further till May tenth. So during full week, they're not gonna be able to do any exterior excavations. They are planning to concentrate on doing some gate valve repairs this week. Uh, as far as the fu- fire hydrants, they are waiting, I think it's on eight fire hydrants to be delivered. Uh, and they're supposed to be delivered last week, but I think they're gonna come this week, so. Uh, so they're a little delayed on that for the delivery of them materials. They have ordered a hundred stop boxes. Them are supposed to be on their way relatively soon. And the three hundred and fifty excavations is actually three hundred and fifteen. But is what we did is we added thirty-five additional ones. In case some of the three hundred and fifteen random ones ran into issues like the stop box was under tree roots or in the middle of a driveway. You know, very expensive type of repairs that we would go to the next random generated. Location, so like number three sixteen would be the first option.
Right.
That was it.
And in regards to that one, um, the um, representative from the Eagle Department said you can do those substitutions. As long as they still maintain the pattern of um, being random, you can't like do all, all of your adjustments along the street construction road. Or something like.
Right, that's why we have the extra random ones that, and they're in a, in a specific order on that map.
Yep.
And I also advised um, SACWA in regards to the situation that we're experiencing with Miss, Miss Dick. And as I expected, all of the communities are having the same problem. Um, so I, I've asked who can we um, encourage to have the um, Miss Dick staffing. Increased because all communities right now are doing the same work. So I understand why they're behind, but I mean, this was a state mandate, so they should figure out. So I understand why they're behind, but I mean, this was a state mandate, so they should figure out how to make it um something we can do in a timely fashion cuz it's holding up programs and progress and everything costs dollars.
Hold up the road leaving too.
Yeah.
So does that affect our timeline, Scott?
Uh as of now, no, cuz the majority of the the group one streets are a mill and overlay. So as long as they're not outright excavating, they really don't have to call in Miss Dig.
Okay.
So.
All right.
And on the sidewalks, we're um trying to finalize the um assessment of those relative to the conditions. And it's pretty cool when you see it on the GIS map. And so we can get those numbers over to Scott so he can draft the RFP. The fire hydrants, they're working on those. Um seven of them are scheduled for replacement for the next two weeks.
Just a just a question, Cheryl. Uh it's an observation. I s- I saw a couple of houses where the stop boxes were replaced. And obviously the dirt was covered back over, but um is there a is there a way we could, you know, make sure we at least smooth that out a little bit before adding some grass cuz it just looks clumpy? And you're gonna get some complaints if it continues like that.
I'll inquire about that. It was my understanding that they come back and you know, pat it down because it has to settle.
Right.
So.
They're supposed to come back and and finish grade that work. Uh and then add seed and mulch.
Right.
And we do gotta make sure that Sunday services does does that on a timely basis.
Okay. Okay, just an observation cuz I know you're gonna get complaints, so. Okay, appreciate it.
So those are the main projects and updates. Any other questions or comments on those?
Good luck.
Okay. And the last item that I have is the um the planning commission. There is a vacancy as of the April meeting where Charles has um stuck with the original date of the expiration of her term, which we thought was May first and it's actually August thirty-first. So there's a need to fill that position and presumably whoever is appointed to fill that will continue with the new term. And also the term for Jason expires August thirty-first out thirty-first. I wouldn't expect you to need to fill that just yet. But I just wanted to alert you to the fact that there is a vacancy. And we so far have received two applications. The deadline for um applications is May tenth.
Okay.
I'm just talking. That's why no one's paying attention to me um cuz I was on mute, but um for the pointy, we complete the remainder of this term and fill the three-year term from May first to is that April thirtieth or August thirty-first?
August thirty-first because the term should actually start September first.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say right here it says April thirty-first.
Then yes, that should be August.
Okay. Thank you.
So the applications that have sub- been submitted, are we doing a review or are we um just gonna finalize that?
The mayor makes the recommendations for the council confirmation and the deadline is the tenth, so if she chooses, that can be on the May seventeenth agenda.
And we'll get applications like we always do in our packet, so.
Okay.
Oh my goodness, that was the end?
That was the end.
We're in council comments.
Okay, well, let me get back to the beginning of this. Well, like what you said, does anyone have have any uh comments, uh anything you want to uh?
Yeah, I have one. Yeah, I've been thinking about it for a while, so um at the last council meeting, we saw um the the ar- architectural plans to expand the police department and I was hoping Chief McKee would still be on. And we saw the figure that the amount is gonna take to expand the the police department. And you know, I was thinking about this because um over the last couple of months, been noticing there's a great deal of uh mental fatigue and some uh mental issues going on within our community. And I think we may need to have some sort of common ground or compromise on the price slash whether or not we wanna fully renovate and maybe have some trade-off to at least incorporate some social worker within our city. Because uh it's gonna be needed. I mean, a- all of us here would would be in agreement that we don't really want our police to have runs on on mental issues going on in our city. Because it could it could end badly, number one. And number two, you know, we want our police officers to stay safe and and do police work. Um I don't think they're gonna really wanna do that. So I think we really need to try to evolve and think seriously about incorporating some sort of some sort of social work person or persons within the city to deal with our mental illness that's happening within the city. That's just my observation. Um I could be totally off-base. I don't know what that price is. But certainly it may offset the million dollars we're looking at to renovate the whole police station.
Yeah, keep keep in mind, that's just proposed. We haven't taken action on that.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I I've been thinking about it. I know we might have to go out and get some kind of bond or what, you know, that kind of process, but we still need to seriously consider it. And bottom line is if we decide, okay, it's better to go with with our renovations, that's fine. I mean, I I would, you know, whatever we decide, but um given certain cer- circumstances within uh what's happening within the city and COVID and deaths, um I think we really need to consider it.
Yeah, we're definitely worth talking about.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't think that's been either or uh scenario. We could, you know, potentially do both. I'm not saying do the whole, you know, we're still consider the renovation as is and decide what we wanna do. But I think it's a great idea to have a social worker type of person as an option to be working with the city and and be available to kind of help respond to certain situations. I think that's important to think about doing that.
Yeah, and given given our size, probably would have to be some type of consultant or on-call type of person. Because uh we're obviously not big enough to to have a full-time, you know, position for that, but definitely, definitely something we should consider.
Right, right. I mean, I don't know if we wanna expand the conversation, um but uh everything I've seen, I mean, it's it's a great design. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I think we should have open discussion to see where we go with it. If we go both ways, that's fine, even if we go one way. Um you know, I'm open to that.
Thank you. So are you looking for a response right now? I'm sorry.
No, no, um you know, I I just don't, if we wanna table it and bring it up later, that's fine. Or if we wanna, you know, just talk on the side as it comes up or wait till the next step, which is, okay, we know what that number is. What are we gonna do about that number? The total renovation number, maybe we should bring it up then. I don't know, I'm just.
We can, we can talk, why don't we talk about it in another study session, but we we can talk about it independently. It doesn't have to be in in conjunction with the you know, the potential police renovation. I mean, it's a separate issue, so I mean, let's talk about it.
Okay, all right, that works.
My that my thought anyways.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed. Anyone else?
All right.
Person. Thank you, uh Ian.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else? Celine, Bruce? As you know or may not know, um we're having another um food distribution on uh May fifteenth. Uh I'm not sure if this is the last one or not because I actually talked to the um the uh the transportation company and and to the people that have the contract for farms to families. And so everyone seems to think that they're gonna work something out. And just to let everyone know who may be listening or watching is that um we have no control of what gets uh sent to us. We, it is totally something that is uh put together through the uh USDA and the farms to families and the only people that they will work with, they were like nonprofits or cities or churches. Um so no control over what what is in your box. And I, we try very hard to uh go through, kind of look in the box um and take out what doesn't look good. But uh once cars get to rolling through there, it is just about trying to get them uh moved out. So any volunteers uh for the fifteenth, let me know. I will also be putting a flyer together. Um and I think that yeah.
It it, you know, I I don't know definitively, but it will most likely be the last because the federal government pulled the funding for for that program.
Yeah, I know that they pulled the the funding, but I talked to someone else and they're saying that they're thinking they may be.
Able to get one more out of it or something, yeah.
Yeah, so I personally, it's a big undertaking as most of the people that are closest to me know. So if it's over, then I hate to say that it's over cuz it's exhausting. And it's really, it's a hard lift as mostly everyone on this call knows. So um and I really wanna um um thank you all for also helping with that. Um my goal this time also is to have drivers, so Ian, if you're willing again. So uh and I don't think that we have anything else um that's coming up before our next meeting. And our next meeting is on the seventeenth of May, right?
Well, before you go there, um and while I have four of you, I would like to know your availability ability to schedule a budget study session on either Monday or Tuesday.
Of the week.
Next week?
Didn't we all responded to that already? Did we respond to that or?
You did.
Oh, oh. I thought you were adding, I thought you were talking about adding a different one, another one.
Either it is, fine with me, so.
Did I respond? I think I did, didn't I?
Yeah.
Um I didn't respond because I've got too much going on, but give me a chance to respond tomorrow. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
I guess my pick would be Monday, but I could do either one.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
And six or seven PM.
Six or seven P. Oh, oh, I have to let you know, six or seven. Okay, got you. All right.
It's six, six for me.
Okay.
Yeah, six is, I like six better.
Okay, what are we covering again? Just some fresh?
Budget.
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 Okay. Okay. All right, I'll get back with you, Cheryl, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm trying to go through my brain and think if there's anything else that I wanted to bring up that I just happened to not write down. But I don't have anything else. So anybody else on the call, Pam or Suzie or Scott, Kelda, is that? You all have.
Oh, do we have an update? I'm sorry, do we have, do we have an update on the ticketing uh within the the city? You know, we were going to be stepping that up. Um wanna know when we're gonna start to step that up.
Well, already the officers are asked to dedicate at least an hour of their um shift towards um traffic enforcement.
Okay. Got it. All right, thanks.
Traffic enforcement in the residential area.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Just FYI, it was um in coming off of Red River right behind the uh Credit Union. Uh it took everything not to do with citizens arrest on someone who blew straight through. I'm coming off of Red River cuz I, as I said, I'm doing new ways to get out the neighborhood. But just blew through the stop sign, blew through the two red lights and then pulled up at the Credit Union. And then like a police officer was there, I mean, you know, I was there, but I didn't have my badge that I've been asking for cuz I could have, yeah. Anyway. No one wants the support that I see. So anyway, um anything else?
Is there anything from the audience?
Oh.
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment.
No hand raised at this point.
Up, hands, hands up now. Kim, hi.
Hello?
We're here.
Okay, I'm coming back to the issue that Ian raised about the uh water systems replacement and the lead pipe stuff. So my question was and remains, and I heard your discussion saying that DiMaggio or DeAngelo or somebody's the contractor. But when you have a statement saying that the owner must hold the city, the engineer and the contractor harmless and free from any claim, it doesn't make sense to me why I would sign a statement saying that if if the if the contractor damages my property in in the replacement process. So somebody needs to explain that a little bit better to me, please.
Carol or I don't know if he or Scott Ringler. No, Scott Ringler.
That is the city's contractor, such as our attorney is a contractor.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, so.
You want me to send it to you, Scott?
Yeah, send it. I mean, I I'll find it. It's the one that Suzie sent out, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's it's item seven, right? Been right before you sign.
Yes.
And then and then the the counter is item three and four on page two.
And if I could add one um area of clarification, DeAngelo is not the city's contractor. We are actually contracting through SACWA for, and so SACWA has been contracting with DeAngelo Brothers.
Okay, that still doesn't explain why the owner is required to uh hold harmless.
Did you?
Anyone?
I'm sorry, Kim.
The the attorney's looking at it. Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. Um city engineer contractor. Yeah, it really shouldn't include the contractor in item seven. We need to we should amend that and send that out because contractor is defined as a qualified contractor. That's a word contract, so that that shouldn't be in there. This, the uh as Cheryl did indicate, this is, this came from SACWA, so um this wasn't drafted by us, but we can fix that, that's.
Does everyone that's already signed it, do they need you to add a gym to that or what does that look like?
Yeah, we should send out a new one that's updated.
Insurance requirement? And what are the insurance requirements from the contractor? Do you know?
Uh that I I think it was a million dollar general liability policy, but I don't have, again, I don't have that in front of me. That that was all bid out by SACWA. That wasn't bid out by the city.
Can you do a copy of that? Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be helpful to know.
You have any other questions, Kim?
No, that's it. Those two statements just didn't seem to me to make to be congruent, so I'm glad that you're saying that's correct.
Well, thank you for um bringing it to our attention and then um as soon as we correct that, which I I'm not sure what's our timeline, we'll figure out what the timeline is to get that corrected and sent back out.
Okay, you said you had fifteen people. Okay, you said you had fifteen people already signed that, uh, I'm kind of amazed that fifteen people. Would sign it.
A portion in it that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, there was a portion that I took it as. Cuz obviously, okay, not at the back, the cat's out the bag, I, I took it as if I didn't sign it, it was gonna happen anyway, so. Is that correct, Cheryl?
Well, it's not that it would happen anyway, you would just. Continue to have a water service line that had land.
Oh.
And loo- and lose the opportunity of having.
It wouldn't perform the work. They're saying they wouldn't perform the work if it wasn't signed.
There was some, I, hmm, maybe I read it wrong, but there was something that made me think that. Um, I know that.
I think it's the second attachment where it says that. So Scott, what's the timeline to correct and get redistributed?
Trying, sorry, I'm trying to find the original uh, bidding documents from SAKWA, but uh, tha- that shouldn't take long at all to fix, I mean, it. Just needs to be reset, I mean, they probably can go out tomorrow.
Yeah, that's a Cheryl thing, isn't it? Just take the word out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Joe, so you'd explain it to the other people who've already signed the document as well, saying, please re-sign.
Yeah, we probably will have to do that for sure.
Or there's an amended form.
Yeah, we could, I mean, sending out an updated form uh, data with a cover letter identifying that there was some language that needed to be corrected. Again, I think the, the other agreement, which I'm still trying to locate. Cheryl and Suzie, you guys send a lot of emails. That, that would be a, a controlling document anyways, because that's the agreement that the city has through SAKWA with the contractor and their, their responsibility. So we'll correct ours uh, that went out to the residents, but. There shouldn't be any issues, even if there were uh, some sort of damage or, or. Incident that occurred between, between now and when those um, updated, updated agreements go back out, so.
And what I'm talking about is the portion that says under failure to sign water service line replacement agreement. Um, it has four bullets in there that kind of made me feel that you had no choice but to sign it, I'm not sure if you all saw that, that's what I'm talking about. There is one you can have where you discontinue water service. Um, also. Obtain a court issue to make the residents do it. Other actions that from permitted by law.
Essentially, the state is saying they were mandated to do the work, so it becomes a by any means possible, I don't. I would hope nothing gets to that level.
Yeah, my point was when what Bruce was saying, you just don't do it, that wasn't true, in this letter that I got, it says something. The four bullets were very specific to me that said, it made me feel if I did not sign it, there were some other actions that were gonna happen right after it.
Oh, was it, what was, were you, were you one of the lead ones, Kelly?
Isn't that obvious right now?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I didn't realize that until you just said, overtly said it, yeah.
So, Kim, I'm just saying, that's why I, I signed it, because I, you know, just.
Gotcha.
And Cheryl, will you make sure that uh, that Kim gets a copy of our agreement with SAKWA, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? Bruce, where have you been? You haven't paid attention to anything I've been saying on all these calls about, I was one of the people that were holding them up.
I, I never heard you say that, I wasn't on that hall, whatever.
I heard that.
I, I, I guess it just didn't register that you were talking for yourself as opposed to, you know, just in, in general for the replacements.
Well, nope, talking for myself. Okay, guys, so um, is there anyone else that uh, has anything uh, that they would like to say? Anything that we need to bring up? Otherwise, uh, let's adjourn this and we will see each other next Monday or Tuesday, whatever is decided. And uh, you all have a good evening, stay safe and we'll be talking soon.